Good morning, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us unreminded of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Oops, sorry?
I will move that we approve the minutes of March 7th, Public Beharing Commissioners Meeting, and the minutes of March 9th, Special Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Okay, next, do we have any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Only a resolution, otherwise it moves to regular public conduct. So, it's not about a resolution. Okay, alrighty. Next, we have County Engineer, Dan.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hope you like the snow we brought. Alright, let's see, I have one resolution for your consideration today. Finding for the public convenience and welfare requires us to rebid the resurfacing for the main drive in Lafayette Township.
Move your first.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing the sanitary engineer to purchase a case wheel loader for the Hinkley wastewater treatment plant through state purchasing.
Move your first.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Next up, we have Holly Mirren, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have three new hires, one in maintenance, one in HR, and one in sanitary. One rate increase in sanitary, one date correction in sanitary, five resignations, two at Job and Family Services, one in maintenance, one at Dog Shelter, and one in transit, and one retirement at County Home.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Scott Miller, County Administrator, just in time.
Good morning. I have eight resolutions due today. The first resolution is amending appropriations in various funds and accounts. The second resolution is actually authorizing a revenue adjustment for the County Home. The third resolution, accepting this certificate of substantial completion of the Medina County Courthouse. This is for Phase 1. The fourth resolution is authorizing the execution of the stop-loss agreement and an addendum with Medical Mutual. This is for the Employee Health Insurance Plan. The fifth resolution, accepting the material terms of the settlement participation forms consistent with the terms of the Allergen, CVS, Tiva, Walmart, and Walgreen settlement agreements with One Ohio. And the sixth resolution is authorizing an agreement to purchase equipment from SEP-C for use of the new courthouse. This is through Pepham, which is a purchasing pool in Pennsylvania. The seventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution is authorizing the payment of claims in the amount of $1,407,670.23.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I did want to bring up, there's this one involving the settlement agreement for the One Ohio MOU, for the Recovery Foundation. I just want to bring, make note, I'm not going to vote against it, but our concerns are more of governance than it is this agreement. Under that agreement, there's the formation of a nonprofit entity that basically is acting as a pass-through for the dollars. And given its organization, the composition statewide, as well as there's regions under that court agreement. We're in Region 19, number of counties, we're doing a board. A bill was on it before, now I'm replacing them. But it came to my attention that actually they're now looking for an executive director for this foundation, who basically the salary that they're going out for is $250,000 to $300,000 a year for a nonprofit entity for the executive director. Their current budget for operations this year is $1.2 million as a pass-through organization. I just find very disturbing that that kind of money is going to be spent for an executive director when this money is supposed to be for opioid treatment and recovery. And I'm going to be voicing those concerns, and I think there's others as well, that they're going out on a job search to find somebody to that extent. Right now, they're paying $83,000 a year for an executive director, and I just think it's outrageous.
I completely agree, that salary is totally out of line.
And so, I don't care statewide or whatever, and it's only an organization will be in existence for about 10 years, I believe. But it's still, the millions of dollars coming through, it really is taking away money from treatment and for those who need it for their programs. And I just think that, like I said, I'm voicing my public concerns, and hopefully those of us that are working through the governance structure will likewise make it heard at the board. But they've already out searching for that entity right now, was decided apparently last month according to the minutes, and just wanted to bring to your attention, I think we're continued to monitoring what's going on.
Roll.
Sweating, or, Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Department reports, Greg Brown, County Home.
Good morning.
And I believe you have a resolution?
I do. Get my paper out here, it would help. So, one resolution for today, for your consideration. The resolution would award a contract for the removal of wallpaper, drywall repair, and painting at the Medina County Home.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Okay, and now with my updates. The home has a current census of 41 residents, two P. Fowls, one house cat, and a bat that we recently discovered during training one night in the attic. We're working right now with two other potential candidates for this month for the home staffing. Where we have one RCA that's retiring, that was in the resolutions, and we also have one for the 29th as well. We're currently advertising one Indeed for full-time RCAs and a part-time LPN. Nothing so far, but we did, on a positive note, we did get an application for an intermittent RCA, so that helps. Some of the events that have happened out at the home on the 28th of February, I think I had mentioned her, Nature Pam, we love her, she tells us about the Yellowstone National Park. And this one was the Hooves, Paws, and Claws, she brings pelts for us to touch it, it's a great, great one. I'd recommend that one for any school or activity. On the 4th of March, we had the annual Chatham Firemen's Association Sugar Bush Pancake Breakfast. This was our biggest one yet, 28 out of 41 residents made it to that one, it took three trips to get there. Food's always amazing, you know, the flowers milled for the pancakes, sausage from Akron, they make their own maple syrup. We gave a donation after 21 residents, or 28 residents came. Also, Access the Arts is coming this month, we've got two events. One's on St. Patty's Day, they're always fantastic with working with our residents. Some of the donations, I might have mentioned it with the last one, but it was just worth re-mentioning because it kind of ties in with something else. Feeding Medina County gave us the 1,000 pounds of frozen chickens. Wow, that really stretches my budget and helps my levy dollars. They're amazing, and we always try to give back. Like I said, the residents will go there, I think twice a year, and they'll just pack boxes for them. And then, just to give a shout out to Katie for that Spring Forward Gala was really something over the weekend. Also, other donations, we had residents, family members give us money, and we were able to purchase four new recliners. We had a grant from the Senior Service Network that we've used to buy two iPads for the residents. So, we've encased them so they don't break. IT is doing the last tweaks on them, and then we'll actually set up the program till they'll actually be able to go on and on the internet with control. Some of the improvements are sportsroom floors, the wood floors have been refinished. Anybody that wants to come out and check them out, they're beautiful. That yellow pine that was underneath there really came out well. Greg Baker from Baker Brothers Floors did a great job there. Shout out to First Comm for those new phones that we've got, much better, doing a fabulous job with those. And then, with the maintenance and IT departments, we've kept them busy this month with repairs to lights, doors, and a boiler pipe that wants to leak. Also, for IT, with the new phones, our fax machine's been giving us problems, and they've been out there trying to assist us with that one. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything? Thanks, Greg.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have Eric Haines from Soil and Water.
Morning.
Hi, Eric.
Alrighty, so our 2023 tree sales, we are sold out, which is a good thing. The pickup dates will be April 28th and 29th out at Guy's Orchard on Route 3. Our spring native plant sales, we are sold out. Orders will be May 19th and 20th pickup at our office. One of our partnering agencies, the NRCS, has hired a new district conservationist. His name is Jeremy Leche. He will cover Medina and Lorraine Counties, and his start date is March 27th. 2023 Fall Foliage Tour, the committee had a planning meeting at our office on the 7th. This year, the tour is in the southwest area of the county, including Westfield, Harrisville, Homer, and Spencer Townships. We're currently prospecting for a few more host sites, but the candidates who have applied already are good. An article of mine was published in the February 16th Medina Weekly regarding flooding concerns within the county. February 22nd, Jeff Van Loon, Jim Smith, and I attended the OFSWCD Annual Meeting in Columbus. Main topics included the importance of our partnership with the NRCS and local work groups that will be starting up again here in the next few months after the new DC starts. On February 24th, the Commissioner's Newsletter had an article from our Watershed Education Specialist, Abby Costello, addressing the Medina's watershed concerns regarding the train derailment. A upcoming event, presentations for Buckeye Middle School students on water quality and recycling will happen on March 21st. We're hosting a pond management clinic at Leitha House Park on March 24th. Our guest speaker is Steve Fender of Fender's Fish Hatchery. Steve will talk about pond management, site selection, construction, fish stocking, harvest rates, aquatic vegetation control. To register, you can call our office or check out our website. We have a presentation on green cleaning and healthy homes taking place on April 5th at the Brunswick Rec Center for the Brunswick Garden Club. Our first presentation for the Western Reserve Grant will be on April 8th. This will cover invasives and is linked to our buyback program to help eliminate calorie pair in the county, which as of January is now illegal in Ohio. The presentation will take place at Olenschlager Nature Preserve. Our March Board Meeting will take place tomorrow at our office, 6090 Wedgewood, and is open to the public. And as always, if you have a group, club, or municipality looking for a speaker, reach out to our office for anything conservation-based.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. Okay, next, we have a couple of guests, if you'd like to come up, Rachel and Beth, and introduce yourselves.
I'm Rachel Ruffer, I am the regional liaison for Secretary of State Frank LaRose, so I just wanted to stop by. Now I've seen you at Ribbon Cuddings, and it's nice to meet you. There's been some activity at the board, Carol's going to retire, and they're going to bring in a new director. I think her first day is, might be today. So, everything's looking well, your board is fantastic, they do a great job, so thank you for supporting them. And then, this is Beth.
Hi there, I'm Beth Bigum, I'm currently the Northeast Ohio District Representative for Senator, US Senator JD Vance. So, excited to be here, had some time to spend in Medina, had some ribbon cuttings recently, and spent some time with your park director Nate Epic last week, and toured the Chippewa Falls area that they're, that y'all are revitalizing, and all the water, kind of work that y'all are doing. So, doing some great projects, excited to be here, certainly want to be someone that works with your county. I cover 20 counties for Senator Vance, so I will be here often, as often as I can, but certainly want to have an open dialogue with each of you, and to be able to meet your needs, whatever we can do from the federal level to help your county thrive and grow. That is definitely of goal, Senator Vance's, we've been, as you can imagine, you know, very focused on the issues in East Palestine recently. And Senator Vance was there yesterday, and we're just pushing for cleanup in those areas to make sure that those folks who have been, you know, really have been through so much, so much trauma, so much damage, just physically, mentally, you know, having to deal with a community that has just been devastated. Just working hard for those people, so we continue to do that, but continue to think about the larger ramifications that go on anytime with the rail industry, and Senator Vance has, and, oh, there's a bipartisan piece of legislation that Senator Sherrod Brown as well, they've come together, and a couple other senators from Pennsylvania, and some others, Holly as well, have put together to enact safer railways for the United States. So, that is an important piece of legislation that I hope to see passed, to make all of our areas safer, because we never really know, you know, we have trains come through so many communities. I come from Hudson, I was on city council for seven years, and we have, that train went through Hudson, so it could happen to any of us at any time, and we just have to, you know, make sure that we're doing the best for our constituents and working hard every day to make things better. So, anyway, happy to be here and to get to know you all, and thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but we do have a big agenda, we understand if you have to get on to one of your other counties, so thank you so much. Okay, so next, we have public comment. Would anyone like to make any public comment? You, discussion or public comment?
I just want to introduce my chief deputy.
Oh, okay, I was going to call on you in discussion, but if you want to come up for now.
Well, I just want to introduce my deputy.
Want me to bring her on the camera?
Come on, come right here.
That way people on, on the internet and Facebook.
I want to introduce my chief deputy, Joelle Hannah.
Hello, Joelle.
Hi, Ms. Joh.
Hello, very nice to meet you.
And I also have Ms. Wonkovich, Michelle Wonkovich.
Hello, Michelle.
We'll be bringing her back. And just wanted to take a moment to say hello and introduce Joelle here.
Hello, very nice to meet you.
Officially, officially now.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
And we'll be coming to your meetings.
Excellent.
Just dropping in?
Yeah. So, anytime you have anything, just raise your hand during discussion session, and we'll call you up.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Nicole, did you have a public comment? Come on up. You have to come up here, yes.
Sorry.
Name and, name and address for the record.
My name's Nicole Macher, my address is 711 Guilford Boulevard here in Medina. I recently, just, I just wanted the commissioners to be aware of some things that happened this past Friday at the NOAACA meeting. I know Erin is aware of it. So, some of us went up to the meeting in Cleveland on Friday, and we were told that the meeting was at max capacity, that there was probably about 20 to 30 of us that were not able to sign in and be a part of the meeting. We were told, those of us that were waiting, that there would not be anything regarding Climate Action Plan. So, about half of those people left, which it's weird that supposedly there was no discussion on Climate Action Plan, but the website has now been updated regarding Climate Action Plan. So, those people were deceived that had left. The remainder of us were told that we needed to stand outside in the cold, and if anyone came out, that they would allow us to come in, you know, trading places. Last, last time they had a meeting, I believe it was in January, they had opened up an overflow room for those of us, you know, so all of us would have been able to be there for the meeting. They did not do that this time. So, as people did trickle out, we would ask the person who was at the door, "So, can we come in now?" And she would just say, "Sorry, my hands are tied, we can't let you in." I was just, I'm just kind of shocked at the way that they handled the situation. So, I just wonder if this NOAACA group that our county is a part of, if the people that elected you guys into your positions are not for it, what are we to do? Like, is it just kind of tough, deal with it, there's nothing that we can do regarding the way that they act towards the people that have elected you into office? I just, it was very, very disappointing.
It's a public meeting, correct?
It is a public meeting, and this did come up, and I, so, thank you for sharing, not to cut you off, but I think.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nicole.
It's an interesting, so Friday's meeting, there was a lot that went on, I think we're probably going to spend a little bit more time chatting about as well. But specific to the capacity issue, there was a meet and greet, legislative meet and greet before the meeting, and I think that's the reason the overflow room wasn't available. That was an explanation I received that I think was fairly.
Most people went into the actual meeting, so the room was available.
Right, so the room, the room was available once the meeting started, you're exactly right. And, and the other thing that that legislative meet and greet, I think, contributed to was several of the people who were there for the meet and greet, and I don't think anybody, the meet and greet really wasn't a public meeting. But there were people who were invited to that who ended up on the speaker list, in the room, taking up seats that would have otherwise gone to representatives who showed up for a 9:00 meeting, which is what was published. And so, the combination of not having an overflow room, combined with not letting in folks as others left, and by the time the action item that related to climate action was on the agenda, the room was about half-full. And I did clarify on the record during the meeting if the policy was to let people in as others left, and was told in no uncertain terms that that was the policy, but for some reason downstairs, that wasn't going on, so. Yeah.
So, what's, what is the capacity normally?
I don't know the answer to that. If I, so, not counting the board area.
Yeah.
I would say you've been up there, maybe 50 people could fit inside the actual hearing room.
Right, okay.
And then.
They, including the board or not including the board?
Not including the board.
Good, okay.
So, in the, in the gallery area, I would say around 50 people, maybe a little bit more than that. I don't know what the rated capacity is in the room, but that's about how it's set up. So, and then the overflow room is basically an open conference room.
Right, I know where that is, yeah.
Yeah, if they had that set up, you could probably get 100 people in there if it was set up for.
Right, that's where the, actually, when I was there for a number of years, that's where the board met until Grace Galucci was director, and they decided they wanted to remodel the back and put, do all that, what they've done.
Yeah.
So, the idea was that they would have a much larger overflow room.
Yeah.
But apparently, they used it for other purposes last Friday.
Right. And, and the other thing I think that's concerning of Nicole's comments, thanks for being here today too, because I think it's helpful for everybody to hear this. The agenda did not, in so many words, identify Climate Action Plan, but because we were dealing with the overall work plan for the year, it, I think that opens up the discussion items to anything that's on the overall work plan. And the concepts that had previously been known as the Climate Action Plan were very much top of mind for, for, for at least most of the public that was there, and also for, I think, most of the elected officials who came specifically with the intention of reinstating the language Climate Action Plan into the overall work plan.
Do we want to continue talking NOAACA, or do we want to bring it back up?
I don't think anybody else has, anybody else have any public comment? So, we can go right into discussion session and talk, let's talk NOAACA.
Well, I know we have, the mayor's here, and I will all do deference to that. And then we can bring back the discussion on NOAACA.
I think that's fine, yeah, because there's more, I'd have more report on the meeting and the discussion.
All right, let's circle back to NOAACA.
So, stay tuned, we'll be around.
Next, we're going to talk about the proposed courthouse lease. So, Scott, would you like to come up and lead that discussion?
All right, so, the, the city submitted a proposed lease. I believe you've all had a copy, and have all had the opportunity to review it. I went through it quickly, I do have some, some significant concerns. You know, when we, when we had talked, I had, when we had first started talking to the city, I don't know, a year and a half ago, or, you know, we provided them with what the cost was, and with a, with a lease amount, and with the estimated security costs, and, and the base rent. And, you know, we've continually gone back and forth, back and forth, and we've decreased it significantly over the last year and a half. And, you know, when we had met several, what, about six weeks ago, I think, with the, with Mayor Hanwell and Judge Warner, you know, we had agreed to a base rent of $28,193, which was basically the square footage of the courthouse less the law library. And then we added in the connector that's going in from the, from the new courthouse into the 1841 courthouse. And, you know, when we got the lease back, it wasn't the 28,193, they actually dropped it to 26,342. Also, they referred to a lot of different exhibits within the lease, which we'd never received copies of. Shared areas, you know, they omitted the holding area as a shared area. They also indicated that the rent payments would begin once the renovations were completed, and they occupied the building, when I believe that actually rent payments, once they take possession, I think the rent payment should begin. There's also, you know, the city has the exclusive right to extend the lease, which again, if the county at some point needs that space, I mean, I think the county should have the ability to terminate the lease and not extend the lease. And the big one, when we had talked, we had 33 years with two 10-year renewals, and the city came back with two 50-year renewals, so in essence, and they have the exclusive right to renew or terminate. So, in essence, you're entering into 133-year lease at, for a base rate of $28,193, increased by CPI after year number six. The, the security, you know, we talked about the security, and they agreed to cover the cost, 20% of a sergeant and two deputies that work the X-ray machine and metal detector out front. And one of the concerns is with the, with the city and the traffic that comes in to the municipal court, if the traffic increases to the point where we need to add an additional metal detector and X-ray machine, if that's due mainly to city traffic, what, what, does that still remain at an 80/20 split? Or does we increase that to cover the city's actual cost? They also, in the lease, they indicated that the, the property insurance, you know, we have property insurance through Corsa, the 1969 building, we own the building, we have to have that insurance. And the city, I think they had an 80%, and we, that needs to be 100% covered by the city. And that would be cut, that would be invoiced to the city, or should be invoiced to the city once it's paid. We pay that once a year, I think it's in July, so we would invoice them that in July. The, in the lease, they indicated that the shared areas, the maintenance costs would be covered entirely by the county. Any maintenance in those shared areas should be, have the 80/20 split. Then they also had this, this one section here, 31C, about repairs, if repairs aren't completed, within 90 days after written notice from, from either or. Then, let's see, we're imminent way supremacist is either occurring, likely we're upon, the above time period should, shall be shortened to five and 30 days. There'd be a 5% fee to cover overhead, that should just be removed. I mean, it's just one of those things, we're maintaining the building, we're maintaining the, our side of the building, the city's maintaining their side of the building. I think that should just be eliminated. And they also have, if the, if the building is destroyed, I mean, again, in my opinion, we've, we've, we have built the new courthouse with the expectation, with the antennas, as we talked for the last, I don't know, two years, three years, that we would share some of those costs of the new building, including some of the, the cost of construction for the shared areas. And we still have those bond payments regardless of what happens in the 1969 courthouse. And my opinion is that the, that the city should continue those payments, even if, even if something happens in the 1969 courthouse, and for a period of time, it's, it's not able to be used. It's one of those things, you know, we can use the 1969 courthouse for our own. Um, it's one of those things, you know, we can use the nineteen sixty-nine courthouse for our own operations, um, at some point. Um, so, the, the, this, the county is actually giving up that ability to use that space. Um, and I think the city, with, with the lease that, that we proposed, with the original lease that we proposed, I think the city was getting an, an exceptional deal. Um, it was below the market rate. Um, it was, I believe, cheaper than, than what they would need to, um, renovate their own building. But, those are my comments, um.
Um, yeah, I, I'd appreciate it if you stay up here in case we have any clarifying things. Um, I also would appreciate, um, of your notes, if you could, um, give a copy to the mayor before he leaves of your, of your comments here. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, um, do my top three, and then I'll, I'll, I'll move on to you guys. Um, I was really disappointed when I, I got this, uh, draft. Um, but my top three that are just, um, non-starters for me in this contract, um, are the two fifty-year renewals. I was very clear at our last public meeting about this, about, um, not holding future leaders to extraordinarily long leases. And, and number two, the begin date, as far as lease payment goes, it could take the city potentially several years to decide their design, or what they would like to do with the space, so not having the payment dates actually begin soon as possession takes place, again, is also a non-starter for me. And then, you know, to have exhibits in here that are not even here for us to see in the, in the contract, um, we can't even begin to discuss those. So those are my top three, so I'll, I'll move on to you guys.
I agree with you.
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree, uh, just to echo, I guess, what I, what I thought the conversation was at the last session, was that we'd leave the, kind of the second component of the renewal more open-ended. And, um, and I think, I think we'd all, all of us up here, along with the representatives from the city who were at that meeting, I thought we were all kind of in alignment on that, and that was the, the one that, that did kind of catch me off-guard, was the length of time that, that it really wasn't open-ended as much as it was just definitive, this, this is here. Now, I will say, one, one point, uh, and, and Scott, I appreciate your summaries, because it, it is a helpful, I think, way to kind of get the universe of, of some of the issues here, uh, because I think all the points on here are good points, inasmuch as they identify things that are probably new issues, or, or, or things we haven't seen before. Um, I am, I, it, looking at it, I guess, from the county's perspective, I think if we're not prepared to say that the lease that we sign, the day that we sign a lease for that space, that we're not prepared to honor it for the term and whatever renewals we have in there, then we probably shouldn't be signing a lease. So, um, I don't, I don't know that I agree that we should have the right to step back in if we have a need for it during the initial term plus the renewal. But, um, that's, that's more in the mindset of when I thought we were talking about a fifty-year.
Did you mean the initial term? I thought you just meant renewal.
Well, if, for ten, if it's ten years, I, I agree. I, I think if, if we have the thirty-three, ten, and ten,
What?
Then that, yeah, I mean, because the city, obviously, they're gonna invest some money in the building, and we should allow them that, but if we're doing fifty and fifty, I, I, I absolutely disagree with that.
Okay, good, yeah, and that's, and then, so then I do, I, I certainly agree with that, because I, I, I don't think I could support, um, a lease term of that long anyway. Um, so that's why, but in the context of what we were talking about before, in those terms, I would, I would expect that when we sign that, we're gonna honor, um, the length of time we give them, term and renewal.
And, and I, I agree with all of Scott's points on this long list. I was just stating that my top three that are, to make this contract a non-starter.
Yeah. I would agree, I, as I said before, this is a deal of the century. My God, a dollar a square foot, and CPI, uh, can't do a better deal. I'm not gonna bargain against ourselves. We, we gave them our best, we've been go, over the last year, year and a half working on this.
Mm-hmm.
Let, let's see a document that reflects those understanding, what we had six weeks ago.
Mayor, would you like to come up, or would you like to take Scott's list and, and maybe do another shot at this, or do you have anything to say, or you, anything you wanna add? Come on up.
Good morning, and thank you. So, I, I think there's some misunderstanding with the fifty and fifty, eve, even with the two attorneys on my side. So, John Coyne wrote the fifty, and then the second fifty, when he says, "this lease", he's talking about the first fifty. That's, that's his interpretation. He agrees, the wording could've been different. When Mr. Huber read it, he had the same analysis that you did. And when Colleen mentioned to me, a hundred and thirty-three, took her by surprise. I had no idea where she was coming with it. When I read the, the renewal, I was seeing it as the fifty plus the thirty-three. So then, when I went over to Mr. Huber and have him read it, he said, "No, it's, it's fifty, and then another fifty, both at the city's option." And, um, when I had Mr. Coyne, when I talked to him yesterday before council, he said, "No, it's, it's fifty, and then when it says 'this lease', we must give notice", and it goes on and on, but to explain the first fifty. So, the long and short of it, it is, the square lease with the county already in place is ninety-nine years. The parking deck lease with the county is ninety-nine years. Uh, what I was trying to get to is, from the original fifty-three, somewhere closer to ninety-nine. If not ninety-nine, if you tell me the max you wanna go is seventy, eighty, whatever that number is, at least I know what the number is, then, then to plug into the document. The second thing I, I, I think is more of a question of Scott, it appeared to us in reading the, this number that they changed the square footage to, was the number that Branstadter said was the available space to the city for the renovation. So then, the additional between the twenty-six thousand and the twenty-eight thousand, we understood it to be the hallway addition that the city is being asked to pay for the construction for. So then, we had the question, well, if we're paying to build it, and, and the lease payment, uh, for, for the bonds, why are we also paying to run it? So, Scott, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding that, or?
So, the, it is a legitimate question, but I know on the, the one form that, the, the sheet that has the different shared areas, when, I think originally, the city was looking to move the law library to a different location within the building, so they could have outside access into the law library. And that square footage actually increased from like nineteen hundred to like, I think, thirty-six hundred. So, so it, it's really the, the law library, and you're actually gonna be taking some of the law library, I think, for an elevator. So, it sounds, actually, it didn't get reduced, I believe, if those are the last plans I saw. So, yeah, so I've, I took the total square footage, I subtracted out that nineteen hundred. And then, yeah, that, that twelve hundred is in the, is in, that twelve hundred square feet is in the new building. So, yeah, we, and, and the eighteen forty-one building. So, we've already built, actually, most of that hallway for you. Um, the only thing you need to do is you need to put in two doors, and that hole in the wall, and two walls, and it's done. So we've already done that, um, the majority of it. So that's why we're leasing that, that's why we've included that square footage in the lease.
But, that's not.
I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead. I think you're gonna ask the same question I was.
Out of fairness, though, that's being charged to us in the amount that we're paying for the lease, correct?
Um, that's.
Well, no, it's not, it's not, because the bond payments, the calculation for the bond payments was seventy-seven thousand dollars, you guys are only paying forty-six. So no, it's not included in that.
So we're arguing about something less than two thousand dollars a year?
For what, the?
For the rent.
Yeah, yeah, it's a hundred bucks.
Well, we're, we're, we're not arguing, sir, I'm just trying to understand it, with all due respect. Um, if we, if we need to make it twenty-eight thousand, whatever the number is, uh, to, to, to make this work, I, I, the, the most concern, I know each of you ha, ha, have expressed your concerns, um, the shared space, you know, we agree. Uh, and, and we'll get the language to, if you give me those, those comments that you had, we'll, we'll work, work the language out. Um, my biggest concern, and I shared this last time I was here, is, is the duration of the lease. And, if we can come to some sort of reasonable consensus, as to what all you think would be fair, knowing that we have a, a past precedent of two examples of the city and the county working together at ninety-nine years.
I, I think, just to offer my thought, I, I'm sure others have other thoughts, but, um, when we left that last meeting, I was pretty comfortable with the thirty-three, ten, ten, uh, structure we had talked about. And, and, and I realize, and maybe this is part of the confusion, it was a little bit nebulous what was going to happen after that. Um, I, I, I am not, speaking for myself, comfortable with locking something in that's a CPI adjustment, um, increase in rent beyond fifty-three years from now, for the distinction I make between park space and improved space is, um, the county's use. And I think, I think Mr. Miller makes a good point, um, as it relates to that. But if we commit to, you know, thirty, thirty-three, ten, ten, um, or thirty, ten, ten, I'm confusing it now.
It's thirty-three, ten, ten.
Because thirty-three is the bond.
I thought we were gonna look at some open language for, after that, but not like lock in like this document does.
Right.
Okay. Now, that language, out of fairness, that language was taken out of the parking, taken out of the parking deck agreement. That's the exact language that was in the parking deck agreement. So, so we will make the language what you're comfortable with. If you'd rather, after the fifty-three years, uh, another renewal may be negotiated
I think that.
between the existing parties.
May be negotiated, yeah.
Yeah, like a mutual option, instead of just a city option at that point.
And, but, uh, Scott, all of Scott's points here are significant. I was just highlighting the top three, so I would like to use to see those, yeah.
Understood. Understood.
Anything else you wanna add?
No.
Have Greg take another shot at it. I, I actually was surprised that, uh, you know, when John was at our last meeting, when we talked about the thirty-three, ten, ten, so.
And is there some magic number that you all would like to see?
I don't even think it's a magic number after the thirty-three, ten, ten. I think it's like some open language to renegotiate.
Just open for discussion. Okay.
But it can't.
Both term and conditions.
Well, the term conditions and dollar amount at that point down the road, because the, the world could be completely different as far as needs and.
Well, the question is whether it has an exclusive option.
Right.
You eliminate the word exclusive, it will be the option of the city and the county to decide what goes beyond that, uh, fifty-three years.
Not to, not to parse there, but I, it, it could be an exclusive right to the, right to the city, but it's a first right. Meaning, if the city and county don't agree, the county's not gonna shop it to anybody else before an opportunity to agree with the city. Because the exclusivity there might be, if that's a condition for them, I'm, I might be okay with that, provided that whoever's in charge for the, of the county in fifty years, has the right, fifty-three years, has the ability to negotiate at that point. So, I just don't wanna lock them into the terms, term and terms.
Agreed.
I, i, if the, if the board wouldn't mind, you know, we're leasing the space to the city, um, I feel we should be the ones preparing the lease. And if you don't mind, I can get with, um, our prosecutor's office, sit down, go through, address some of these issues, and then provide another lease to, to Greg. If, if you're okay with that.
I think that'll help facilitate it, yes.
Oh, you would love that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that.
Do you mind that? Okay. Um, was there any other concerns or any other major points from your side that you wanted to put on record here today?
Not unless you have other questions.
No.
No, I.
I, I think we're, we're awfully close.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of getting the details to where we can all be satisfied. I think that's what we're all trying to accomplish here.
One hundred percent.
Okay. God bless, have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you guys, thank you. Um, okay, so, next up, we are going to talk, uh, the potential renewal of the Rumkey contract, so Barb, would you like to come up?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have, uh, the district's drop-off recycling contract, uh, will conclude on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. Um, per the contract, we have the option of renewing it for an additional two years. Um, in my short time with Medina, um, I've had, um, the opportunity to work with the people at Rumkey and, um, have, everything's been very amenable, and they've been very competent in what they've done. Um, in accordance with the contract, we would need to notify Rumkey, uh, six months prior to the end, which is tomorrow, I apologize for the short notice. Um, we basically just need to let them know of our intent to extend the lease, if that's what we'd like to do, and then they have thirty days to respond, um, if they agree to that, to those terms. So it would be my recommendation to go ahead and extend the lease for another two years.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that, sure.
So, will you take care of notifying them today?
I will, I will do that. Thank you, no, that's it.
Thank you so much. And Barb's having her three-month anniversary with us this week. Uh, okay, Scott, anything else? Jeremy?
Uh, just wanna let you all know that our office renovation at our, uh, has kind of begun. Um, we had to relocate workstations for twelve employees, so we are crammed all throughout the office. Um, I think all but two employees have fully moved. Uh, they're gonna start demolition on Monday, uh, with an anticipated completion date of June sixth. Um, I'm hoping to have a resolution next week to start purchasing the office furniture, as that lead time, I think we were told is like eight to ten weeks, so the idea is to coordinate this, so it'll be completed, or, or we'll have the furniture when the renovation is completed. And also, would just like to thank, uh, Dan and Andy over at, uh, the county engineer, and Richard Nelson at the building department, for, uh, allowing us to store some materials throughout the building to make this work, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Greg, anything more? Uh, Denise? Who else? Dan, Holly, Bethany. Okay. Chris, did you have anything? Okay, Steve, you're up.
Oh, jeez, we've got, uh, what, we have a letter of support, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, community project funding request for Akron Children's Hospital,
Mm-hmm.
Medical Health Center, uh, wanted to just bring that up. I think you had all the supporting documents, are we okay with signing that?
Yes, I'm fine with the letter.
Okay, super.
Are you okay with the letter?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
All right, all right.
The only thing that would've made me.
So you'll take care of that, Brian?
The only thing that would've made me more pleased with that letter is if it said it was bringing back labor and delivery services to Medina County. So I will more eagerly sign the next one that mentions that, just for the record.
Well, that's kinda difficult, that, when Senator Oboff and I was a representative meeting with this Medina City Hospital, even Metro Health, trying to see if they could provide it, uh, that's, that's a difficult.
It has been for many years, but I just.
It's a shame, yeah, my first grandchild was born there, and the other two had to go to Akron, so, and it, it's a decided difference, and I know even the staff over there in the hospital miss, miss that facility, as well as the, our county.
They did great things.
It was a disservice when they removed it.
Yep.
So, but anyway, um, okay, um, I guess we wanna talk about Noaka?
Yes.
Did you wanna brief us?
So, um, stepping, I guess, we talked a little bit about the issues with, um, with the, the public, I guess, portion of the meeting, uh, and it fortunately didn't end there. Um, so we were, the, the, one of the action items was to, to address the overall work plan for the new fiscal year. And, um, to spare, I guess, some of the details, it was, it, there was some, there had been some listening sessions that had taken place in January that were well-attended, my understanding is, I know Bethany was there. Um, and many of the, you know, Lake, Lorraine, Geoghan, Medina County had, had pretty well attended, uh, those sessions. And as a result of some of the feedback they received, um, it was decided to, to modify some of the language in what had previously been referred to as the Climate Action Plan. Um, as a result of those changes, a lot of the testimony that we heard, uh, in the public, uh, comment section of the Noaka meeting on Friday, the board meeting, was oriented around, um, restoring that Climate Action Plan, uh, language. Then the language they were looking for is Regional Climate Action Plan. Um, it was explained by the executive director, Grace Galucci, that the, the wording that had been removed, partly was, it was removed partly, I think, as a compromise. She didn't use those words, but I'm paraphrasing. And then it was also partly removed because the terminology that the, that came out of the committee, the finance committee who had reviewed it, was basically not ripe. They were, they were referencing implementation of a plan that doesn't yet exist. And so, basically, you know, if we, we had. And so, basically, you know, if we, we had to modify the language because what went in front of the committee for approval wasn't really where we are in the plan's, you know, evolution. So, um, it was proposed from the floor, uh, at the board meeting to restore the language approved by the finance committee in spite of the fact that it wasn't, I guess, accurate or consistent with where the project is. And then, again, I'll paraphrase, to kind of worry about everything else later. And there was a lot of resistance from the, um, I believe, twelve or thirteen representatives in that room, uh, at the board meeting of Medina County, Lake County, Lorraine and Geogga Counties. But, uh, our thirteen votes weren't sufficient to, uh...
All the counties don't add up to what Cuyahoga County is.
Right.
Well, right now, it's a composition of like forty-six members, nineteen are basically the outlying counties.
Right.
So, we're gonna be outvoted every time.
Right, and not just outvoted, um, because historically, and I'm new to the board, but you can certainly shed some light on this. My understanding is they, they tend to, to work or want to work more towards consensus, and there was no effort to do that on, on Friday. Um, we made, uh, a proposal, maybe to just to kick the proposal, to approve the O W P as drafted, but then to, to, to put the issue back to the finance committee to present some amended language that we could then reinsert later. Those efforts were rejected, and then followed by, uh, a, a motion to close debate, which passed by a two-thirds majority.
This was all over the title of that work plan.
Ultimately, that's what we were talking about.
Not the work plan itself.
Right.
Not the documents itself that, that support it. And I mean, they, you go on their website, you can find some of the information involving, um, our, our air quality, uh, that they're supposed to be directing toward, but this is just the title they're arguing about.
Right, that's right. And, and, um, one of the, one of the points that I tried to make, um, during the, during the board session was, you know, a common refrain was words matter, words mean things, we need to use clear language. But they completely ignored the word regional, you know, in that whole discussion. Uh, words matter, except for the first word, which was Regional Climate Action Plan, because a big swath of the region was completely disregarded in the, uh, in the discussion and approval process. So, ultimately, just so everybody knows, um, that was, that discussion and kind of the fiery components of it happened in the amendment to the work plan, uh, because of frustration and just kind of to voice my displeasure with the way that whole situation progressed. Uh, ultimately, we cast, the, our county cast a voice vote against the O W P, the overall work plan for the year. And I mentioned, I don't know that it'll make the minutes or not, I should. I mentioned that that was, um, you know, not, it, it, you know, in deference to all the committee hours and staff hours that went into that, it's not ignoring that, it's just if, if that's the way that, that, um, is going to operate, it, it's really hard for us to see a whole lot of value coming back to Medina County.
Yeah.
Bethany, did you have anything you wanted to add to this discussion? Yeah.
Yeah, we've been trying to track the...
Sure.
We've, um, worked, I've worked with Denise, and we have been reaching out to the NOAAAC staff for several months now, trying to confirm their availa- availability to come to a meeting, just with, you know, with the Medina County business community mainly, but, but there might be some other folks. And they were pushing it off, pushing it off. Clearly, they had decided to take another route of perhaps rebranding their effort that wasn't clearly communicated to us until late in the game. Um, I, I do think that language is important, the title is important, but the content of the report needs to have more public input and verification. Um, the presentation that I attended in January, which received so much pushback that they're now reacting to, barely scratched the surface of the document of the plan itself. It was more about some of their initial, I, I, they were, they were basically trying to confirm their own conclusions in this, in these public meetings. But there was no real effort at true engagement with, you know, is this plan, does this plan work for you? What do you think? So, there was no real effort at, at really receiving feedback, which is what we were hoping that would come to Medina County for. So, the content of the plan, which, um, Steve, you were able to share, hasn't really been widely distributed among the, the citizens and, and businesses and other constituents in the counties. There's a lot of data in that plan that I think needs some, uh, serious work and analysis. You know, how did they come to those conclusions? What is their science? And so, until we have a chance to dig into that, I would hope that NOAAAC would delay any implementation or moving forward of, of approving a plan until they truly have engagement and further analysis.
I, I think in, um, yeah, there's, there's two issues. I mean, we've already talked about the membership issue, and I want to bring up that there. It, Miles, could you pull that slide up? In two thousand and sixteen, there was a major change. This is how the NOAAAC board membership is determined. Yes, I know, I've never seen a political document. This is in the Board of Directors. This is, actually was approved by every Board of Commissioners, all five counties in two thousand and sixteen. I dare say Adam, Pat, and Tim. I'm not sure that this could be, was easily explained. I understand there was some issues. Uh, what it came down to, this is typical for NOAAAC, they obfuscate with complexity. What it came down to is when the list is, this, this enabled them to add two additional seats for the city of Cleveland. That's what it comes down to. In the end of obfuscation and complexity, in the end, it's about power and money. And I'm afraid that that's exactly what's happening with the Climate Action Plan. It's the same thing. It's about power and money. When we look at the data itself, uh, and that's why I pointed you this table eighteen in the NOAAAC Air Quality Trends Entertainment, the status in, in calendar year, the most recent one, twenty-twenty, uh, they really show the, the greenhouse gas emissions in northeast Ohio. Medina County is thirty percent above the average for the region, with no explanation how they come up with that number. I mean, it's, it's three-point-six tons per capita, but every other, or the lowest county is Cuyahoga, two-point-five per capita. And you look at the other counties, two-point-nine, two-point-seven, two-point-seven. We're way out there in terms of generation of greenhouse gases. And this is the underlying data that they're gonna be using to support policies when it comes to this Climate Action Plan, which targets us. And it does bring the question, how did they come up with this calculation? They use, uh, it's called MOOZ two thousand and fourteen A. There's been upgrades since that from the U S P A, E P A, actually. And you look at the various variables, and so I think, as Bethany's bringing up, we need to bring them here to answer these questions. How in the heck did they come up with this? How can they justify that Medina County per person is generating so much more greenhouse gases than per person in Lorraine, or per person in Geogga, or per person in Lake County? It makes no sense. And so, I, I think this, this, we really needed to call them to task. And their refusal to come here and explain this, I think, is indicative of their, of the methodology they use. They will, already have their foregone conclusions, many of them. This is about Cuyahoga County and Cleveland. This is not about the region. This is, it really isn't. And I am not anti-math. When you look at the board composition, unfortunately, the people that came out on the Climate Action Plan with these concerns were called by David Beach with, uh, Green, Green City, Blue Lake as anti-science. And I think that's, that's offensive. Uh, I'm not, we're not anti-science, we're not anti-math. Uh, but I think what we need to do is they need to justify the numbers and justify their conclusions before we, we go along with any kind of vote or support for, for this, uh, plan, or any of the initiatives. And I, I agree wholeheartedly how Aaron handled this and how our, we handled this. But I think we're, it just shows we're gonna have to unite the outlying counties and those within Cuyahoga County and agencies that are, that are members, uh, to get them on board. I'm pretty sure ODOT, who has a voting membership, they probably abstained.
ODOT had to abstain.
Yeah, they always abstain.
Yep.
But in the end, and I agree with a lot of your points, but in the end, they have the votes, no matter how much we unite. That's the problem.
Well, we've had this problem, unfortunately, two thousand and sixteen, they made the problem worse by adding two additional seats for Cuyahoga. At that, and, and in two thousand and one, when we wrote the code of regulations, I was there for eighteen years, president for three, we did have to periodically review the code of regulations to update it. And we, we never got to the point where we had that calculated, that calculus, if you will. Uh, we never got to that point. We always had some way of accommodating and reaching a consensus. And I think, Aaron, you said it exactly right. That should, we should be reaching consensus on these things, not basically obfuscation and making sure that all, and Andy, we hear probably, I think his voice is concerned as well. It really is about directing all the money and resources to the problems in Cuyahoga County and Cleveland, to the detriment of the outlying counties.
Aaron, what, i- i- in, from NOAAAC's perspective, what is the next step with this plan? Are they planning to roll it out for more engagement sessions?
It's a fantastic question, because, um, the, I, well, I think the plan heading into the meeting on Friday was that, uh, there was going to be more listening and more collaboration. And the very things that we think is, are necessary were, were going to be the next steps. But in light of the language now that is part of their approved O W P, I don't frankly know, and didn't get a good sense, and it didn't come up at the meeting, of course, on Friday, which, uh, the other problem, I guess, that I had with it was more symbolic than anything, because there isn't substance behind it. Um, but for as concerned as I am about the fight that we got into over what amounted to a title, uh, I'm even more concerned about what the next steps will be if now they've got to meet this accelerated timeframe with data that we don't really fully understand and know the implications of. Well, I think we know the implications.
Historically, the work plan authorizes the staff to utilize the resources of the agency to accomplish a, a given outcome.
Right.
And at this point, unfortunately, is whether the Board of Directors and whether the executive committee itself will have, uh, significant input. I know that the federal, federal, uh, uh, federal highway and so forth, they do require audits in terms of public participation. They have to follow the policies. We need to hold their feet to the fire in making sure that the public is engaged and the, all the elected officials are engaged in that process. Otherwise, the staff just take and do whatever they want to do.
And that did come up. I don't know if anybody joined the, the webinar, if I was the only one who had the pleasure of sitting through the meeting. But, um, that, that did come up. The chairman, Hammercheck, from Lake County, Lake County Commissioner, mentioned specifically the audit potentially being in jeopardy from the, the way that action was taken in, I, I, I guess, in a sense, contravening the, the public comment section. And I'd just like to weigh in a little bit on the mention of the, the meeting sessions, too. Um, business community, I think the agricultural community has a critical role to play in those conversations. I know when we talk business community Medina County, we, we, of course, mean them as well. But, um, you, you know, and those are interests that are very much aligned with the other, what I guess is commonly referred to as the ring counties. Is that what we're referred to in NOAAAC parlance? Yeah, the ring counties, um, where those interests are, are very much aligned. And, um, some of those conversations, I think, if there's, if there's a positive to take out of this, one, it's this conversation, because I think it does have our full attention as a county now, um, of some of the things that go on up there. But the, the, um, kind of joining together and the solidarity of the others who, it wasn't just Medina County who was on the outside of this. It was Lake County's votes, Lorraine County's votes, and Geogga, with the, with one exception, I think, in Lorraine County, but the countywide votes of Lorraine County and also Geogga. We were all in, with one voice there, just one very small voice based on the way the math works.
In, 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 in the past, we've been able to count on the ring communities in Cuyahoga County as well. Those that represent, that they do it by planning districts, and those that are in the southwest suburbs and southwest, oftentimes with ally with us on certain issues and be able to moderate the, 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 I'll say, the disagreements, the dissonance between us and maybe Cleveland. And this was over various projects, the widening of I-71, the interchange policy and all that. But unfortunately, I think the balance of, of votes have gone against us.
At least, the, the room was made up on Friday, that was the case. And I, I do think, um, there was some mobilization for a fight on the side of the proponents of the amendment that, uh, the rest of us were a little bit caught flat, flat-footed. Because at the point where they cut off debate, which, that didn't make the, uh, the Idea Stream article, that, that the proponents of the majority cut off the debate, uh, early with a two-thirds vote, they passed that by one vote. So, if we had a, a little bit more participation, and there were, you know, vacancies around the table from some of the other counties, we might have been able to continue the debate and maybe come, come up with a little bit better outcome in the short term.
We were down two, um, we had, because of illness and the other, they couldn't make it, so.
Yep, and, and that was, that was the case in Geogga County. They had one or two folks absent. Lake County had a, um, a public official whose funeral was that day, so they were down two votes. So, so there were just a number of circumstances that led to that two-thirds vote. I think that would have been more difficult to come by in normal circumstances.
I would note that, um, when the, the last Business Advisory Council meeting I attended, I believe it was December, the Climate Action Plan was an agenda item to update the, the group on that. This year, they're actually combining the Business Advisory Councils with the Rural Advisory Council and the Community Councils. So, I believe the next meeting is coming up early next month. Um, I can try to see if this item will be on the agenda, and if not, at least force a conversation in new business to try to get the business community more engaged in the issue to, you know, have NOAAAC give us an update and, and ask for a, a more engaged period of, of comment and analysis of the report.
I think if the, if the passage of that O W P means that things are moving quicker on the plan, which I think it has to, based on your, your assumption there, uh, the urgency to have those conversations is much greater as well.
Absolutely.
Great.
All right, I will bring that up on the agenda for the next meeting.
Great.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Steve?
Uh, duh, 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 I don't think so. Had enough trouble today.
Um, no, that's it for today.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion?
Uh, move that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and to consider the employment and compensation of a public official.
Second.
Roll.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week.